Now, the question is, do you see the full screen slide or do you see the notes page? Let's see. Settings swap. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. What I really want to do is go to the beginning of the slideshow. So you get a quick preview here of all my slides. Okay, great. This is slide one. All right. Start from the top. So I should say that most of these slides, almost all are literally hot off the press or presses. Because they were presented earlier today by Dr. Ferrer in her media availability. So, you know, all of this data just sort of just went public a little earlier today. And was shared with with media. So you're getting you're getting a similar presentation and up to date numbers here. So this, the first slide, of course, is just sort of showing an overview of where we are today. Where we've come from in a cumulative way. Very, you know, very sad to say that we had 26 deaths today. And even sadder to say that we are on the verge of another milestone with almost 27,000 persons who have lost their lives since the beginning of this pandemic, just in Los Angeles County. The cases reported today, you know, a little over 1,000. And actually, that number, that number has generally been pretty stable the last week or two. So we're sort of at a plateau, which is good that it's not increasing much or not increasing yet. We hope it doesn't do so as we get closer to the end of the year. But we're all, we're sort of very prepared for that and concerned and, you know, almost expect that numbers will go up as we pass Thanksgiving holiday and then get closer to the other end of the year holidays. Although we're glad that it's sort of plateaued at the moment. It is kind of plateaued at a pretty high transmission rate, much higher than we'd like to be. It's still substantial transmission in the county, according to the CDC categories of what, you know, of transmission. I see over one and a half million total cases since the transition start, since the epidemic started. At this point in time, our test positivity rate, the percent of all tests done that are positive is quite low at 1%. And that's good news. And you can see our cumulative case rate, the seven day cumulative case rate, which is sort of how the CDC would rate a region or area in terms of transmission. Level of transmission is at 81. And that's sort of what puts us in substantial transmission. If we were over 100, we would be in high transmission. If it were under 50, we would be in moderate transmission. And that's where we are aiming to go, right? Down, not up. And currently hospitalized is fairly stable. And a little over 600. So this slide really, the next few slides really have a theme and have a purpose. And that is really to help demonstrate why everyone should get vaccinated. Not just to protect the community, certainly to protect the community, but also to protect ourselves as individuals. So this, so the next few slides are going to show some comparisons in terms of what's happening to folks in LA County who are vaccinated against COVID-19 versus those who aren't. So this, this slide is comparing case rates, right? In vaccinated and unvaccinated people and hospitalizations of cases in vaccinated and unvaccinated people. So the solid lines are fully vaccinated, right? This is the case rate, the green. This is the hospitalization rate. But whoops, go back here, sorry. So, and these are the unvaccinated, right? The dotted lines, the green is the cases. The orange is the hospitalization. I think you can see the stark difference there between the solid lines and the dotted lines. And notice that for the unvaccinated, the rates and hospitalizations are going up. I said that the total numbers were pretty stable. So how is it that these numbers are going up? And the answer is because most of the county, a good percentage of the county has been vaccinated. So this denominator or this group who are, who are representing the large majority of cases and hospitalizations is a group that's shrinking compared to the vaccinated group. And this is another way to look at it. This is breaking it down by age. And I know folks were very interested in particularly in the specific data for for children. So I wanted to make sure to include the the age breakdowns. Again, it's showing a similar pattern, right? This is vaccinated cases. This is unvaccinated cases. You know, this is hospitalizations for people who are vaccinated. This is hospitalizations for people who are unvaccinated. So again, in every, in every age category, the pattern's the same. People who are fully vaccinated have much lower risk of being, you know, being infected in the first place and a much lower risk of being severely ill and needing to be hospitalized. But again, it's also dependent on age. The biggest numbers for hospitalization at least are in the older, the older age groups. And as you can see, the numbers here, you can't even see the bars, but but we've included the numbers. So of course, the number of children hospitalized, and this is in a, like a one month period. You can see in the title, it's early October through early November. So the most recent month, more or less. And the numbers are extremely low in younger people, which is great. They are much less likely to experience serious event, you know, being infected with COVID-19. But on the other hand, because the 12 to 17 year olds, we're getting them vaccinated. We're getting those numbers up there. But because the 12 to 17 year olds do have a lower vaccination rate as a population compared to the, you know, 50 plus, the middle age and seniors. Most of the new cases are actually coming from the younger age group. And of course, mostly from those who still aren't vaccinated. This is just another comparison of of death rates. And again, you know, solid line is fully vaccinated. Dotted line is not yet vaccinated. Again, I mean, I think the graph does speak for itself. The people who are dying, not, not 100% exactly. There are a few vaccinated people who still get significantly ill and even do pass away. Especially people who already have serious underlying conditions. People who are immunocompromised and maybe don't, don't react or respond well to the vaccine in the first place. But you can see this, this line is incredibly flat and close to zero. And although this is a little bit unstable, you know, it's, it's much higher. Whoops, did it again. It's it's much higher rates than, than the vaccinated. And I would say despite the, you know, despite the fluctuations, this is relatively flat. If we tried to do the average line here, I would say, I don't know if you would agree. But since this peak, you know, earlier in the summer, when we had that other surge early in the summer, it looks like this has been almost flat, maybe decreasing a little bit over the last several weeks, which, you know, is, is not great. We want to see, we want to see this one drop. This is, this is people dying, you know? No coming back from that. Okay, and here's again, a kind of the same data, but split up by age. And yet, needless to say, it's quite apparent, almost all the deaths are in the middle age or older population. They are more likely to be, right, more ill to begin with, or have chronic conditions or have other underlying risks compared to younger people who, on average, tend to be pretty healthy. And you can see here, the younger age group, now, we don't have the 5 to 11 because we're comparing vaccine and non-vaccine. And of course, 5 to 11 just got started on that. So there's really not much to compare there. That's why we're limited to the 12 to 17. But as you can see, at least in the last month, the number, you know, the rate is zero, right? And the number is zero. So it is true that fortunately, we have had very, over the whole pandemic, we've had very few deaths in the, in minors, right? In children or adolescents. We've only had a handful, I think, less than, less than a dozen. While all of those are very tragic losses. But again, at least, at least the younger folks, as, as, as a, you know, averages, as a population have generally not suffered severe consequences from this, from this virus. At least certainly very, very unusual to so, to experience that. I thought this was interesting because this, of course, is comparing different regions of the county and at least has a couple of your, you know, population centers in the AV compared to, you know, neighborhoods, areas all over the different regions of the county. And this is sort of a comparison of case rates and vaccination rates going on in these different areas. And the blue basically means that the case rate is above the mean for, or the average for the county as a whole. And on this side, it basically means the vaccination rate is really lower than the county average as a whole. So this last line is sort of the county, the county as a whole. And, you know, so you can see, at least these cities in AV are, you know, experiencing higher rates than the, you know, than the county average. And vaccination wise, you know, with the total vaccination rate, now 73% for full, fully vaccinated, right? For everyone in the county. You can see these areas, these particular cities in AV are considerably lower than that. Particularly Lancaster, obviously lowest number on this, on this particular table. This, I love, this is not a Jackson Pollock original, but this, I like this slide because it actually answers one of the questions. People wanted to know about variants and how many variants are there? And, you know, when, you know, how is a variant identified? So although it's a very busy looking slide, it actually answers, it has so much information in it just from these different color patterns here. So I, these are, I mean, the answer overall is there may be countless number of variants around the world. So I'm really speaking for the county, right? At this point. And this shows, this graph shows the different variants that we have identified in our gene sequencing. Now, we don't identify the full gene sequence on every case that comes in. It's a sample. It's a small percent of cases. But when we do the full gene sequencing on our sample, we're then able to say, well, this, of the samples that we sequence, this percent is the delta variant, this percent is the alpha variant, and so on. So you can see, and this goes back to the beginning of this calendar year. And you can't, this does show how things have changed. In the beginning of the calendar year, these epsilon variants was actually quite dominant. Later in the year, or in the spring of 21, the alpha variant was particularly dominant. But look what happened, right, right around here, somewhere in the spring and April. This red one, which is the delta variant, first really emerged. Actually, I guess you can even follow the red line down back here, but it was a tiny little percentage. Back here, around here is where it really starts to be noteworthy. But you could see just over the next couple of months, it exploded. And at this point, from around this point forward, so what is that? That's August, early September. Essentially, the red or the delta variant is 100% of the COVID-19 that we're seeing in LA County. And that's generally true throughout the United States and throughout much of the world. The delt, the delta variant is just so much more infectious than a lot of the, you know, than most of the other variants out there that it very quickly reproduced and spread from person to person and replaced these other variants, just, just natural selection. Right? Little Darwinism there. In terms of other, other variants, you know, that have come up, not, but not predominant really in the US or in LA at this time. I mean, there are, there are variants such as the lambda variant and the mu variant, which are in different parts of the world. But currently, maybe are called like variants of interest, right? So that's like the VOI there in this last part. Variant of interest just means it's basically being monitored by the World Health Organization. Because it seems to be increasing, right, in percent in different parts of the world. It doesn't mean that it's particularly more dangerous than any of the other variants. If it were, if it was shown to be much more virulent, let's say, like it, it causes much worse disease than the other variant, or it spreads much easier, like the delta variant. Or it looks like the vaccines we're using aren't very effective against it. If it, those are examples of things, if any of those things happen, then we would call it a variant of concern for obvious reasons. It would be of great concern. A variant of interest is not concerning. It's just something we're tracking to see what happens with it. Variant of concern means, you know, the, this variant has expressed something that's really, that we really have to be cautious about. This is a very busy slide, but it's specific for schools. So I felt it was important to show it, just show the trend. So this is student cases, student close contacts, staff cases, staff close contacts identified since the beginning of this current school year. And you can see, there were very large numbers, the first weeks of the school year. And that's just largely from the large amount of asymptomatic screening that was done by schools. More LAUSD than any other, but of course, there are many, there are many districts, most districts who are doing some kind of screening. But, but most of these probably didn't happen in school or get transmitted in the school. Most of these were cases that children returning to school was, were already carrying. As you can see, over time, during, you know, over the next couple of months during the school year, we really saw the numbers drop very significantly. Staff, you know, staff is flatter, smaller numbers. But in terms of the students in particular, you know, we've seen, you know, these, these lines, the cases and contacts, of course, parallel each other more or less. And, you know, we've seen them come down a bit here through October. Very small rise at the end of October, but actually, the last, the last couple of weeks, we see even more of a drop. Again, as I said, cases in the community are basically at a plateau. So really, what we attribute all of this to is the hard work that all of, you know, all of your school administrators and your school staff are doing to make schools as safe as possible and limit transmission as much as possible. And it's, it's been successful. What we're doing is successful. Kids are in school, they're staying in school, they're learning. And, you know, we haven't closed any schools there. This is outbreaks in schools, right? Week by week, from the first of August through the last week, I would say we're probably averaging about 10, 10 to 12 new outbreaks per week. Obviously, it goes up and down a little week by week. But again, if I averaged, we, I'd say about 10 to a dozen new outbreaks. The, the colors are interesting because they tell you the sort of where the outbreaks are happening. The orange is sports. So quite a bit, quite a large percentage of the school outbreaks really are related to sports teams. It may or may not be during, all during play. A lot of it may be, you know, using the locker rooms and sharing others' social, the traveling to and from games, socializing, you know, after games or before games. So we, it's hard to tell exactly where and when a transmission occurs. But clearly, the, the association they have being on the team together is, you know, what's driving the, what's driving those outbreaks. The other one is, as far as sort of in school, in classroom outbreaks, it's vast majority is elementary, right? And again, if we think about the vaccine patterns, right? 12, 12 through 17, the vaccine's been available for quite a while and the rates are getting up there. But for 5 to 11, they haven't had vaccine available until just a couple of weeks ago. And, you know, most of them are still unvaccinated. So not surprising that we're seeing more outbreaks in elementary school at this point in time. But as that 5 to 11 group starts to get more vaccine coverage, we would predict that the number of outbreaks in elementary classrooms would fall to a number similar to middle and high school. This is just to show quickly just what our progress has been just in the first couple of weeks that 5 to 11 has been available. HPI means Healthy Places Index. HBI plus is talking about really sort of the, the quartile that, that has kind of the lowest health-affirming resources or access available. So those are the hardest hit neighborhoods throughout this pandemic. And this is kind of showing, it shows number one, our progress overall in getting the 5 to 11s vaccinated. But it also shows the disparities that continue to exist. So I mean, look at the comparison of the sort of hardest hit neighborhoods compared to all other zip codes. And you can see almost, you know, a three to fourfold difference in how quickly they're kind of uptaking the virus, the vaccine, pardon me. And then overall, for all of LA County, we've already got the almost 64, 65,000 young youngsters vaccinated and about 7%. So with 900,000 across the county, we have a long way to go, but it's a start. This is showing vaccination sites. And, you know, I know you guys are up here, this is the AV. There's no question that the AV is under-resourced. You know, compare, look at these, you know, these sites compared to the rest of the county. There's no comparison, but I do, but it is worth pointing out that there still are quite a few. The purple are pharmacies. So most of the vaccination in the region is being done really through the pharmacies. But there are a number of the blue are mobile sites. Now understandably, for folks who live in like the more rural, you know, parts of the valley, it could be a hall to get to the, you know, or the denser population areas. But there's still, you know, just pointing out that there, there are, there are quite a few options, even if it's not as many options as in the rest of the county. And this is a current, this is specifically those that are administering the pediatric doses right now. Since 5 to 11, it's a different size dose. Also, logistically, it's a little different giving vaccines to young kids versus, you know, adult, older, older kids or adults. They're not all offering it. But again, most of the sites that were on the last slide are offering, are offering pediatric doses. So another question that was asked, so this is my slide, that's my, you know, my magnum opus for the night. I put this slide together, this was not in the media event. But people did want to know, what are the criteria for lifting mask requirements? So I just thought I would put it all together on a slide for you, so you could all see it at once. So we released this framework publicly about two weeks ago to show what, what would need to happen in the county in terms of COVID recovery, where we would feel comfortable lifting masking requirements. So in order to lift the requirements for the large outdoor events, right? That's greater than 10,000. So we're talking like, you know, a stadium event, going to a sporting event or a concert at a very large venue. These are the things that need to happen before we can consider doing that. The case rates for the county have to drop to that moderate transmission level at the CDC moderate transmission, which again is less than 50 cases per 100,000 per week, for a week, total cases for a week. And it has to, we have to stay there for three weeks, minimum three weeks to demonstrate that this is stable. This isn't just some quick fluctuation where the number is going to go back up. The other thing is the hospitalizations have to be at a low and stable number, less than 600 hospitalizations per day for COVID. And that also has to be stable for three consecutive weeks. We have to get the county vaccination rate for, and we're not counting the 5 to 11s because again, it's a new population that's eligible. So they're just starting. But for anyone 12 plus, who have now had vaccine available to them for at least six months and going on a year for some, for some people, we have to get the rate for that age group, everyone 12 and older, up to 80% minimum. So now we're about 72%. So, you know, we're, we're creeping along there, but we need to get, we need to get there. And then the last thing, which relates to this variance of concern. As I said, we haven't identified really any new variants of concern here in LA County. So we're okay for the moment. But particularly, we're looking out for variants that are, you know, that are considered a variant of concern and that specifically would threaten vaccine effectiveness. So if the variant that we're, you know, concerned about is particularly one that the vaccines, our current vaccines, don't appear to be very effective against, that's really going to worry us that it's, it essentially could theoretically could sort of put us back to square one, right? Where we, you know, it's like, we suddenly have sort of like a whole unvaccinated population because the vaccine that we've all taken isn't really working against that particular virus and that variant. If we want to extend that beyond the outdoor events to indoor, which is what everyone, you know, is really looking forward to, right? Not having to wear a mask together indoors anymore. First, we have to meet all of these metrics. So all of this has to be in place. And in addition, we have to have a, any establishment or, you know, event indoors, there has to be vaccine verification available. And everyone, all the employees or customers in that place would need to be fully vaccinated. That does include the option of there being exemptions as long as they are approved exemptions. So people can't just stop out and say, I won't be vaccinated, I'll just take a test. They would need to apply and have an approved exemption in order to avoid vaccination. Now, this is, at this moment in time, that, you know, if, let's say, I'm making this up, of course. Let's say we reach these metrics tomorrow, at this, which would be, which we're not, but it would be great if we did. But if we did, there would still be some exceptions. Because as you all know, we must follow state guidelines. We can't be less restrictive than what the state requires. As you know, the state currently requires masking for everyone indoors in a school setting. We can't, we can't take that away, or we can't erase that, or we can't loosen that. So until the state changes that particular language about the in-school setting, we wouldn't really have the legal authority to be able to change that in our school settings. Even if we met all of this. Now, that's not, I'm sure the school, I'm sure the state will make adjustments, especially as we get, you know, to, after the end of the year. Especially as we get, you know, to, to, after the end of the year. Um, if, if numbers across the state are improving like this. Um, then I would expect that the state would make some changes. But I did want to clarify that, as you know, we can never be less restrictive than the state. So we may have to wait for them to change some guidance before we can change our guidance as, as far as schools go. Uh, and I think this is my last slide, so um, this is just sort of how we, you know, where are we at right now? And how are we gonna make the best of things where we are right now? So uh, we really want to keep transmission as low as possible. And that's first and foremost, to protect those who are, are most vulnerable. Cause we don't want that number to go up past twenty-seven thousand or much past twenty-seven thousand. Um, so we really want to protect those folks uh, and our essential workers. Um, so that our healthcare system and other things like schools, like education can continue um, uninterrupted. And those few people who can't be vaccinated because they have some contraindication. So one, we really want, want to normalize our vaccination, get as many people vaccinated as possible. Uh, at this point in time, we continue to need to mask in higher-risk settings. And there are settings where we don't have a choice, like I just said, the state says everyone in school masks. Right now, everyone inside school, indoors in school, much mass. Um, of course, we want to have screening in higher-risk settings. Uh, most, most districts are doing, you know, are doing some screening, uh, which we recommend. We're gonna have to continue to do uh, mitigation when we find cases, including isolation and quarantine. Uh, continue to try to do as much outdoors, I know it's getting colder. And I know up the, up north there, i- it can get pretty cold uh, in the winters. So, you know, everyone needs to do the best they can. You can't do everything outdoors, but what you can do outdoors is always safer to do it outdoors. And then, you know, the last thing is to, you know, avoid or reduce participation in high-risk, non-essential activities. And I think, I think in the school setting, you know, that might, that might include um, some, some extracurricular activities and programs, which are not unimportant. Extracurriculars are very important um, to the, to uh, the students and to their development. But, you know, first and foremost, we want to keep our kids in the classroom. We want to keep them with, back in the, you know, in the classroom where they can learn uh, together and learn with a teacher in front of them. And not have all of them go back to distance learning, which we know was, is not an equal alter- alternative to being in the classroom. Okay, so that is, that's the end, I like, I can stop, that's the end of the presentation, I can stop sharing now. And let me uh, try to quickly go through some of the remaining questions, which I didn't address. Um, and then I, there should be some time for open mic. Um, so I think that the timing's pretty good so far. So I answered a question about variants. Um, next one, is COVID nineteen transmission rate higher than transmission rates for colds and flu? It's a really great question, I, I don't have the perfect answer, and the reason is, remember, we only know about the cases that that for people who get tested and get identified. And there is, for obvious reasons, currently, there are enormous numbers of people who go and get COVID nineteen tests. More so than go get tests for other, you know, other um, cold viruses and flus. But I believe, I think it's fair to say that especially as we get into flu season and cold season. You know, most kid, you know, most kids who have a runny nose or sneezing, or, you know, have a have a mild cough or sore throat, you know, what we get when we get a cold, most of them are gonna have a cold. To be honest, right? Some of them may, are going to have COVID nineteen, but most of them are gonna have a cold. And although I couldn't get access to a slide, a colleague at the state actually does, does show a slide comparing sort of trends for other cold viruses like adenovirus and rhinovirus and parainfluenza and influenza. And basically what he's showing is that, in the pediatric population. And basically what he's showing is that the numbers for those other cold viruses are not surprisingly higher than um, than COVID nineteen at this, at this point in time. And those numbers probably will go up as we continue to get into colder weather and into the winter, uh, uh, and into the winter season. Um, so I hope that answers that question, or at least that's the best info I have at the moment. Uh, what are the long-term effects of COVID? Uh, really important um, question, and uh, I think we're still learning and we're still studying this. But we're learn, but we're learning that so-called long COVID or continued symptoms after recovery from the infection seems to be more common tha- than we even thought. And that actually includes young people. I mean, sometimes the long-term symptoms are a little bit vague, right? It might be for most people, that might just mean lasting fatigue. Um, or um, ongoing incidence of headaches, for example. Which imagine, you know, even for, for a young person who um, was generally perfectly healthy before they got infected. I mean, that's, you know, that, that's, that's life-changing, that affects, that affects their uh, their whole experience, including their school experience, their experience with peers and home experience. So even though, you know, uh, that might not sound incredibly serious, i- it can be. Um, or it can ha- it can certainly have significant effects on an individual. On top of that, there are more serious organ, um, organ damage or organ inflammation that can continue, obviously the lungs, right? Cause this is a respiratory infection. People can continue to have um, shortness of breath or, or um, more exercise intolerance. So the shortness of breath comes on really when they're exerting themselves. Nobody wants to live that, like that, but if they, you know, unless they have to. But imagine again that you're a, a, a child who is otherwise very healthy and now is dealing with, you know, um, that, that level of disability. Um, you know, there are many other organ, uh, many other end organs that can be affected, including the heart. We hear about, uh, obviously, the, the um, presumed risk of myocarditis, right? Inflammation of the heart muscle is very, very frightening and very concerning to people in terms of the vaccine. Um, it's an incredibly rare side effect. If you compare, you know, look at the millions of vaccine doses that have been um, that have, that have been administered. And how many folks have actually developed myocarditis? And the, the case itself have been very, very mild. Virtually everyone recovers with very conservative, uh, you know, follow-up and rest. Meanwhile, people don't seem to realize that COVID nineteen, the infection, the virus can also cause myocarditis and, and significantly damage the heart muscle. Um, probably more frequently than anyone who has ever taken the vaccine. Um, so I think that that's a little bit of misconception or, or mythology there. Um, to not know that. Uh, then of course, we have like the post-infection syndrome. You've all, you've all heard about the multi-system inflammatory syndrome in children, MISC, M-I-S-C. Um, again, a very, a rare, a, a rare syndrome, but very, very serious. I mean, that really puts, when that has happened, that has put lots of children in the hospital and in intensive care. Again, thank God, most of them have recovered, but there have been a number of deaths related to MISC. So, you know, that is a serious um, serious syndrome. So bottom line is, there are, uh, you know, we know overall, on average, children do much better with this virus than older folks. But it doesn't mean that they're, all children are escaping unscathed. A lot of them are having very serious um, events and sequelae from having, from having infection. Um, then uh, someone asked, what is the death rate in children from COVID compared to? Says to the infection diseases, so I'm gonna think that meant like to other infectious diseases. I, I have to kind of interpret that. And yet, we, you know, um, I'm, I always want to be transparent, the death rate's extremely low. As, as I showed you, just, you know, there have been zero deaths in children in the last, last month or so. Uh, in LA County, not across the nation, but in LA County, there have been zero deaths. And over the course of the whole pandemic, um, there've only been several deaths. So, uh, again, not to make light of it, but it is a very, very low number. Um, and so, you know, the death, the death rate for children's very low. Uh, want to be completely clear about that, we're, we're glad for that. Uh, the next question is, how long is the average COVID infection? So I think the way we would measure, you know, think of that in public health is um, how long is someone infectious? How long do they actually have sort of live virus in them that they are producing or can transmit to others? And the answer is, it kind of correlates with the isolation period. You know, the I, the minimum isolation period is ten days. Plus, you have to be free of fever for at least uh, one day, twenty-four hours. Plus, your other symptoms, whatever it happens to be, cough or, you know, uh, muscle aches, whatever, whatever you have. It should be improving. The cough doesn't have to be a hundred percent gone, but it does need to be improving, which is showing that you're recuperating. So for most people, they'll probably be done with their isolation in ten days. Other people may have lingering uh, fever and have, be infectious longer. And they may take longer than ten days, but the average is prob- for most people is probably around ten days. So, so obviously, if you become very ill and you're hospitalized and you're in intensive care and you're ventilated. I mean, these are people who are gonna have much longer um, acute illness. But for the vast, vast majority who don't go to the hospital, it's not very long, right? It's about ten days. Um, but that doesn't take into account the quote-unquote long COVID symptoms, right? Now, a person who's experiencing, let's say they've had lung damage. And they continue for months with breathing issues or with shortness of breath. Um, that is, you know, quote-unquote, the long COVID syndrome and long-term symptoms after COVID. But they're no longer infected, right? That's just sort of the, the damage to the body that's been done already. Um, so the infection doesn't last that long, but the effects can last long. Uh, what does natural immunity, how does natural immunity compare to immunization immunity? Um, general, well, in both cases, we know over time, both, both types of immunity can wane. Um, the good news is you can get a additional dose, a booster dose, right? Of the vaccine and boost your immunity again. Whereas if it were natural immunity, you'd have to get sick again in order to boost your immunity. And I don't think any, you know, if you, after you've had this once, you don't want it again, that's for sure. So um, one thing is, the, the vaccine immunity is a much safer way to get immunity than to, you know, sort of roll the dice and, and get infected, right? You know, we've talked about some of the things that can happen to a person after, you know, if they do get infected. Uh, and the vaccine is very, very safe. Um, even the side effects people most worry about are extremely rare. Um, so that's one thing, uh, I'd, I'd rather get the immunization, uh, the immunity from the safer vaccine than from the actual disease. Um, in terms of how long, you know, immunity lasts, I think that we're learning more about that. I think that's understudy. Uh, currently, the CDC, you know, suggests that people generally are protected for at least three months. That doesn't mean they're not protected longer than three months. But again, that's what the early research has shown, uh, that we could, that people can depend on that more or less. That they have three months of immunity after getting ill. Um, later recent, you know, newer research may have CDC and other groups extend that, extend that time period. Um, you know, maybe, let's say, let's say they come out next day and say, it's six months uh, of immunity. Well, that's, that's better than three months. But the same issues apply with the vaccine. The vaccine is a much safer way to get immunity than to, you know, roll, roll the dice with the, what can be a very serious ill- illness. And kills people, right? Twenty-six thousand, twenty-seven thousand, almost. Um, you know, and, and you can continue, if needed, you can continue to boost that immunity very safely. As opposed to having to go out and get sick again, right? So I would say, so those, that's my answer to that one, hopefully that's helpful. We were told that herd immunity would be seventy percent vaccination, why has that changed? Um, probably several different answers, but I'll, I'll be brief on this one. I think the answer is Delta. Delta, Delta variant, are, are vaccines still protect against people getting really sick and having to go to the hospital? But doesn't protect as well from getting the infection in the first place. Uh, fortunately, so you know, we have breakthrough infections, everyone knows that, not hiding that. Um, probably more common because of Delta variant and how infectious it is. But the good news is, even the people who do get the breakthrough infections uh, because, you know, they, they do have a vaccine protection, generally don't get as sick. And that goes back, I, you know, we, we looked at the slides about who's getting, going to the hospital and who's not going to the hospital, who's dying and who's not dying, so. Um, but that's probably the reason why the models have changed that percentage for herd immunity or community immunity. Uh, what are the benchmarks to remove masks? I did that, I did that one already. Should we stop transmission or just allow everyone to have natural immunity? Um, again, yeah, that, it's an important question. Um, and I think our answer right now, uh, pub- public health organizations and experts is that we should still try our best to stop transmission. And we should try to use our, uh, get immunity through our vaccination programs. And that's because, uh, again, um, vaccine, uh, the, the immunity that comes from natural immunity wanes over time, just like the vaccine immunity does wane over time. The vaccine immunity can be easily boosted. The natural immunity would have to be boosted by getting sick again, right? That doesn't sound good. And uh, again, um, even though most people could get, will get sick when they get COVID nineteen and will recover. How many, how many losses are acceptable? Right, how many deaths should we accept if we can prevent them? Yeah, almost twenty-seven thousand. In public health, we don't want to see one more. We're gonna have a few more tomorrow and the day after that, and the day after that, but you know, we're trying to get to zero as quickly as we're po- possible. Um, you know, people can recover from a lot of things, but they can't recover from death. Um, is the county going to follow state requirements or are we going to add more restrictions? Well, I, I think that we're pretty aligned with state, we're not, and again, you know, honestly, we're not perfectly aligned with state. We do, we do uh, decide to be more restrictive on certain things and at certain times. Um, when the metrics seem to uh, call for it. Um, so the answer is, are we going to? It all depends on, you know, what happens uh, moving forward, especially through this winter. What will, if there is a surge, what will that surge look like compared to last winter? Which was incredibly devastating, Los Angeles County was the center of the pandemic in, for planet Earth, right? Last, last winter. Uh, I don't, we don't necessarily expect that's going to happen, but we do think we're gonna see a lot more cases as the winter goes along. And we have to follow that, we, you know, we have to follow the numbers and, and the data and the science. Before we can say, are we, you know, when do we lift restrictions? When do we leave things the same, when do we add restrictions? Uh, when you, when do you think the mandates for vaccination of staff and children will take effect? Well, um, it depends on when vaccines for children, those vaccines for children get full approval and licensing by the FDA. But our best guess, our best understanding, based on the timing of approval after authorization, after emergency authorization, is that it's likely sometime in early twenty-twenty-two, uh, winter, spring of twenty-twenty-two. The vaccine for twelve-to-seventeen-year-olds, Pfizer at least, will get, um, will get full approval. And based on the governor's order, the mandate then would go into effect um, the next school semester. Meaning basically, starting, you know, in July of twenty-twenty-two and into the fall semester, school year. Uh, that's when vaccine would be required for grade seven to twelve, or roughly, you know, twelve, twelve, those aged twelve to seventeen. So they, it will be age, it'll be age twelve to seventeen, but it will roughly be grade seven to, seven to twelve. Um, whenever the five-to-eleven-year-old vaccine gets full approval. The next school semester would be when that is required. So if that So if that happened several months after the 12 to 17-year-olds, uh, it might be January of 2023, for example, when that mandate takes effect and anyone sort of coming, any uh five to 11-year-olds or roughly K to six, right? Anyone coming back uh after the new year, after winter break would need to be vaccinated uh for COVID-19. That's the best estimate. Don't hold me to that because FDA and CDC, you know, have their own timelines, but. And the last one I have is, why have the booster shots been pushed? Um, uh, the, the booster shots, well, we are, they have, it's a fair question. We are pushing. We really are pushing and that's because the data has shown that just, just like the natural immunity, um, over time, those who have taken the vaccine series, which produces very good immunity for a certain period of time, the immunity does start to wane. Um, this is not unusual with vaccination. Um, we often get boosters, you know, whether it's for the measles, mumps, rubella, right, or um, the uh diptheria, tetanus, you know, pertussis, the pertussis booster. Um, we've had to, you know, in recent years, get those boosters as adults because we've learned that the excellent immunity we got during our childhood series can wear, can wear down, can wear off somewhat uh as we get older. Um, so that's no different for the COVID-19 vaccine. It still works. It's still safe. It's still effective. But uh, we've found that we need boosters periodically. At this point, it's um two months after a Johnson and Johnson vaccine, if you've had one Johnson and Johnson, at least two months or at least six months after your second dose um of Pfizer or Moderna. Um, and at that point in time, uh, it's really recommended every, at this point, really every adult should go and get a booster, a booster shot. Uh, it can only help and you know, again, we're going into colder weather, winter surge potential. Um, you don't want to be caught with low immunity and, you know, uh, boosters, uh, booster's going to be effective at raising them. That is the last uh question on the page. I would have liked to finish even a little bit earlier, but there's still a few minutes uh for additional questions or uh comments or conversation or however you'd like to proceed. I'm, you know, I can uh stay and even maybe stay a few extra minutes um if needed. I, I turn it back over to our host or moderator.
I don't think we, I don't think we've seen any in chat. I, I do have a I, I do have a question.
Oh, Dr. Giljack, so this is Steve Morris. So I have a question on. Can, can you hear me?
Yes.
So on one of your slides, you had, uh, I think it was downtown LA. Their vaccination rate was 89%, yet their case rate was quite high. Can you explain that discrepancy?
Yeah, actually, that, that, that's a great point. Um, I had asked a similar uh question and I just introducing my response by saying I, I had uh asked my colleagues in the va, in our vaccine section who are producing this data, you know, and providing these statistics to, you know, Dr. Ferrer and the rest of us. Uh, there was, there's like a, a um a, a school district, pretty, generally pretty wealthy school district and like the south part of the county that has, you know, like 90-plus percent vaccination rate, you know, for their, for their students. And I asked about that and, and the answer I got was, yeah, we don't really know if that's fully accurate. Um, I think the denominator data is not necessarily up to date or not necessarily accurate. So one of the things, so quite frankly, you know, the, the data is only as good as the numbers we receive, right? Or the numbers we have. So part of that makes me a little skeptical if that, if that vaccination rate is, is uh really true. So that's number one. So the real vaccination rate may be somewhat lower um for that uh, for that area. I mean, that's one simple explanation, um, obviously. Uh, because you're right, it doesn't necessarily uh track very well. The other thing is though, I think in downtown Los Angeles, um, or that, you know, the region in general, i- it's incredibly dense area uh and people, you know, both living very close together with each other and interacting extremely close with each other. And that may, that may raise the risk of transmission even for vaccinated people. Like again, we know vaccine isn't perfect at preventing infection. We just know it helps. It helps immensely to keep people, you know, from getting really sick. But it doesn't help perfectly to stop infection. So that's another reason why a, a, a certain area or certain neighborhood or a certain region may have an a, a, a considerably higher um uh transmission rate, even if they're, even if their vaccine rates are pretty high. So, so there's two, there's two possibilities where.
Well, I know, uh, talking about the COVID thing, but I have little kids in school and it's like, and it's, they, with this new given the American Academy Pediatrics declaration of a state of medical mental health emergency for children. Um, what do you guys think about that? Maybe what it's being the kids are extremely low rate of COVID in schools? And start time to maybe stop, you know, ramping the offering of restrictions. And the mental health price, price.
Yeah, so I'm sorry, I, I didn't hear everything clearly, but I think what I heard is, um, what about, you know, the mental health condition of our, you know, of our school age kids and uh how big a concern is that for ours, for us? And, and how does that relate to the COVID restrictions? Is that, is that correct? Did I hear correct? Okay, yeah. Well, first of all, the answer is it's a huge, it's a huge concern. Um, nobody's, nobody's minimizing that. Uh, we know that, you know, a year plus of basically being isolated at home and not going to school at all and learning through a screen. Not only is it not the most effective way to learn, uh, but it's not, it's not great for young people's emotional and, and mental health. Um, so not only is it the, you know, uh, for the academic mission that we're really, we're really emphasizing and prioritizing getting kids in school and keeping them in school. It's also for that socio-emotional development and health. So we do take that very seriously, you know, and we work with our partners i- in mental health to, to try and provide more resources uh for those students who, you know, really have been traumatized by that uh and need that. But it's a balance um of, you know, uh, of weighing sort of the risk of COVID-19 transmission and outbreaks um against sort of a, a full return to normality or what, you know, what a young person would recognize as normality. Um, again, you know, the state, I mean, the state set up like the masking requirements and restrictions for school at the moment. Uh, we couldn't change that even if we, you know, wanted to right now, but we, I don't think that we would choose to do that now at this point. Again, for most of the reasons that I, I laid out, I, I think we're at a point, I think we're at a critical point right now where things can continue just to improve and get better. Or if we continue to have um, a serious, like, a, a lot of neighborhoods or regions that are hesitant to take vaccine, that are very resistant to the masking policies. We're going to see, you know, we're going to just see metrics go up in the wrong direction uh in the next several weeks or a couple of months, rather than down, which is where we need them to go. So i- it's a, you know, it's a balancing act. We, we, it is our hope that at least having our kids back in school, learning in school with their peers, even though, you know, their nose and mouth are covered, is going to provide um a lot of help and a lot of relief for some of those mental health issues. Um, it's not perfect. Um, I, I don't, I don't like wearing a mask when I have to, but I do it because I want to stay safe and I want to respect other people's safety. So, you know, I, I practice what we preach and um we're, you know, we're, we're, we're gonna, we're, we're gonna change the guidance as soon as we feel it's safe to do so. And the state agrees, we have to stay aligned with the state. But thank you for that question. That's a great question. Yeah. What is the average cost? Well, I don't, I don't have those numbers available tonight. Um, but those are good questions. I think I'm going to write these down and try to get the, and get those answers for you. Um, of course, there's societal, I mean, there's societal costs and individual costs. I mean, the good news is, you know, the individual cost uh of a COVID vaccine is zero. Right? Because they're paid for, you know, um, through insurance or through, um, you know, public funds, but but that's still a cost. So I'm not denying that's a societal cost. Somebody pays for it. But individuals don't have to pay for their vaccine. So, I mean, that's one, one good thing. I think the average cost of a mask is pretty low. Very small uh compared to, you know, hospitalizations, which you know, eve- even one day, even an overnight hospitalization stays thousands of dollars and for someone who's had to be in the ICU and be intubated uh because they've come, you know, this close to, to uh dying. Um, it might be, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars or more than a million dollars. So it's hard to compare those, you know, there's, there's no comparison of those costs, really.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions? Okay, roll with stealth on the next one. We anticipate insurance possible rise due to cost of vaccines to insurance companies.
Um, well, honestly, um, if the vaccines are working the way they're supposed to, see, prevention actually, good, good evidence-based prevention. So here's one I can answer, uh, because I'm a preventive medicine doc. A good evidence-based prevention um in the long run saves money. Right? Again, it, it's almost the exact uh extension of what I just answered. If the vaccine keeps people out of the hospital and so let's say a, uh, an insurance company is paying a hundred dollars, you know, to have someone vaccinated. I'm pulling that out of thin air. I'm not quite sure what their, um, you know, what their retail cost or wholesale costs are for the vaccine. Uh, it's worth checking on though. But if a insurance company pays a hundred dollars to get someone vaccinated and they save, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars on the percentage of people who now won't end up in the hospital, the long, you know, the long-term uh effect is probably cost savings. So I, I'm willing to think that it may not, it, it might not raise um premiums or insurance rates, actually. That being said, I think an insurance company will pretty much take any opportunity it can to raise insurance rates. But hopefully, you know, uh, if they're, if they're being ethical, I don't think that they'll need to raise their rates because they may actually save money on their, um, you know, on their population.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I, I did have one more.
Well, Dr. Giljack, so I think you opened the door with the, you talked about density. So do you think, I mean, you said LA County needs to be about 80% before you lift, start lifting mask, the mask? What do you think possibly an area that has a lower population density could also have a lower required vaccination rate?
Um, i- it's a, it's a reasonable question. I, I have to, at, at this point in time, I couldn't, I would have to say honestly, the answer is, is no. Uh, we're not, um, for the purposes of COVID recovery, we're, we're not dividing the county. Uh, you know, we're not sort of cutting up the county into different areas and different regions. Um, you know, and I know, you know, in many ways, the, you know, Antelope, Antelope Valley is some, is somewhat isolated from a lot of other parts of, of the county. But generally speaking, you know, the county, y- y- you know, everyone sort of i- interacts with everyone to some degree, you know. Um, cities are contiguous with other cities. Excuse me, the service planning areas are contiguous with other ser- service planning areas. People may live in one place, but commute to work somewhere else. Some people commute far to go to their schools, right, across LA County. So um, it's, it's very, I think it's, I think it's difficult and um, I think uh um a little bit uh probably in, inaccurate to treat different um areas and neighborhoods as if they are all isolated from each other. And I think for that, for that reason, I believe that that is our justification for why we're looking at county averages as a whole. So I, I, I think honestly, uh, probably the answer to your question is no. We're still going to look at the overall county average.
And the last question that we have for you. They want to know if there are any stem cells in the vaccine.
Um, no, the vaccine that, that's actually administered does not contain um, any, any stem cells um at all. Um, you know, it's not, i- it doesn't contain any aborted material or anything like that. It's never, nothing like that has been administered to anyone through this vaccine.
Okay, thank you. Thank you again for spending your time to give more of us and answer our questions, so.
Oh, my pleasure. Glad, glad to spend the time. And uh, feel free, you know, to reach out and contact me uh with other questions uh that come up. However, I can be of uh assistance to anyone on, you know, any of your boards. Uh, you can maybe assist us too, you know, as you know, our, our biggest concern at the moment is to get a lot more young people vaccinated. Um, you know, again, we know that many areas in Antelope Valley have uh lower than average vaccination rates in the population. Anything, any ideas or anything we can do that would help? People feel more comfortable in taking the vaccine or getting their children vaccinated. Um, you know, and I'm, we're, we're open, you know, you guys, it's, you guys live there. You know your, you know your neighbors, you know your neighborhoods. And uh, we need to learn from you guys, what we, how we can practice public health better in your region. So feel free, feel free to read. Thank you. Everyone have a good night. Thanks.
Before we move on to the next I'm on agenda, um, can you bring up Cindy Wu and give her the ability to say something? Cindy is the Laxta president. And she has been in attendance, I'm assuming she's still here.
I am still here. Thank you, everyone, for allowing me to speak a few minutes and good evening trustees. Thank you, Nancy, Pastor Nancy, for inviting me here. Just wanted to invite everyone to our next upcoming event, uh, which is uh December 6th. And I will share the agenda, we're actually in the flyer right now. So I just want to briefly ma- remind everyone, I know I mentioned it before, but um, Laxta stands for Los Angeles County School Board Trustee Association. And we basically have five objectives and purposes of the association is to preserve, advance and improve public schools, to encourage and cooperate with all persons and organization for the betterment of education opportunities for the people of LA County. And also to provide a supportive group and means of networking. And hence, I encourage all of you to come on December 6th to network with your fellow trustees in other parts of LA County to promote the enactment of, to promote the Alvez Public Education through all legitimate means. So we meet on the third Monday monthly at 6:00 PM, except for uh December, January and February. And December 6th will be a hybrid program and we're going to do white elephants. So uh, it's optional, you can bring a $25 gift and get another gift exchange. We're also doing a toy drive as well. And I understand you guys have a bus, so if you guys need more bus, we may be able to coordinate that. And I understand you guys have a bus, so if you guys need more bus, we may be able to coordinate that. Our sponsor for the month is BID, um, so they have some buses that may be available, so let us know. Um, and those are the gigantic yellow buses, so we invite all the trustee in the Antelope School Trustees Association. And the superintendent to attend our free dinner, we'll be serving uh Mexi- uh Mexican food as well as Asian food. And we'll have lots of performances from indigenous dance to um. Asian performances and to Latinx performances, so I welcome everyone. And thanks Nancy again for inviting me to speak a few minutes, and I also want to recognize your vice president, Dwayne Webb. Uh, uh, Dwayne, that also serves on um my exact board as well, thank you so much, everyone. I apologize, I realize you've been looking at my notes. There. That's what you guys should be looking at.
Great, thank you, Cindy, and we'll see you on the sixth.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much, okay, now. Now we are to the point where Steve, Steve walk out. Nope, Steve is our, the head of our nominating committee, and so we will come up before we do elections.
Thank you, so uh, as you walk in, it should be a slate candidate. I serve on the next school year and the induction will begin in January, so the everyone grab a copy. All right, I'm, I'm gonna read off the names and people have a talent that they can say, I don't want to read this, so. As president, we have Nancy Smith. Nominated, first vice president, we have for programs is Barbara Gates. Second vice president for legislation is Keith Giles. Third vice president for public relations is Latarya Gomez, Will Sona. Recording secretary would be me, going back to one of my old jobs. Corresponding secretary Julie Bookman. Treasurer Sharon Vega, Auden and Jim McGrady. And a historian is Dwayne Nguyen, so at this time, I'm gonna open up the floor for any nominations. And if anybody wants to uh run for that position. Does anybody want to decline their nomination position? All right, I need the first of closed nominations. Okay, first by Julie, second by uh. Dwayne, so just to my affirmation to approve this slate of candidates, signified by saying aye. Aye, any of those abstentions? Motion passes, so congratulations.
So, um, the next things that we have are some of our committee reports and uh programs. We have our January program set, it will be at Antelope Valley College. And we will receive a tour and an update of everything that's going on there, um, from the president of the Antelope Valley College, so. Um, just keep that on your, like, calendar, and we'll have the date, I think, six twenty. It's the fourth Tuesday, I can say that, and so, but it will be at Antelope Valley College, and we'll all get an update on their constructors projects. Programs are offering, so forth, from the president. And Barbara will have the answer to that, she's their, she's their rep. He said that means they can serve alcohol. Twenty fifth, January twenty-two, okay? Um, and they, it's a bit very next program, it's only a year and a half ago, so I think that'll be fine. Um, and Barbara had the minutes out, you should have gotten the minutes, anything to add to those, Barbara or anything? No, okay, treasures report. Should have it.
Great, thank you.
That goes into our scholarship, so that's great. Their scholarship. Um, the auditors report is out, it's coming out the next time, as we get to the end of the calendar year. Steve, anything update on legislation?
No, except I'm sure that most officials will be giving the. The uh, four thirty-eight, correct? I think that's probably the big thing that people have been asking.
And we need to be watching, we know that supposedly there are going to be a whole lot of bills that are coming up to modify all the things that they know they have. Correctly, for schools, so they'll be talking about this, Glenn is not here for the scholarship report, but uh. You know, um, we have people that have already volunteered to be on that committee, which is great, those are about taken usually at the February, March. And we have two scholarships, we have seven hundred fifty dollars a piece. So we'll, we'll be working on that, um, public relations, Dwayne, anything? Okay, okay, and a lot of parents not here, they had a board meeting tonight. And. So we'll move on, and so we will have it from Mary Lynn, who is our pacer. And she's gonna update some things that are going on, and she sees through CSBA, because she is our rep. For our region, and she covers Ventura as well, so. Her, I'm gonna let her explain what her job is, so that you know what it is, and feel free to contact her, she's very willing to give out our information.
Yeah, thank you, Nancy, um, hi, my name is Mary Lynn Galen, I am the CSBA. Pacer, which stands for Public Affairs and Community Engagement Representatives, so I am your local contact for CSBA. So any questions like Nancy said, or any, any you need from CSBA, I think you can let me know. Um, I am, I have both this region for the LA region as well as for Tarrant County, so. Um, I'm gonna try and be as many things out here as I possibly can, and thank you for having me tonight. I hope you're all coming to ADC in San Diego, um, and. Also, if you are going to ADC, you should have received the health protocols for that. Make sure you allow yourself enough time when you get there to get your credentials, because you have to verify. The the health piece of things, and so it'll take a little bit longer. But we are really looking forward to having that in person, and if you're not doing it in person, there's also virtual conferences the next week. That's actually about it. Thank you, and anyone else needs to buy tickets before we start the the round?
I will tell you that the prize Barbara was talking about is in the middle of the table, that would be the last prize left at the table, so. That would be the last one to go. So you can take anything else off the table, they're not that. And the chicken is in there somewhere, and. I'm gonna give you a um, a target to see if you can beat what you're given and to our, to our scholarship. No, she took it to several board meetings and corrected from the board, so she went to cover the board meeting, so. And everybody's tickets in?
Right, we have like two hundred eight dollars for the wrap.
There's a lot of the round prizes tonight.
All right, first number, seven four eight. Eight six two, seven four eight, eight six two.